Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the public hearing for the 2024 budget for Calver County. And at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second? I have a motion, second, that we reconvene our County Commissioner meeting today. And any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. County Administrator, it's all yours.
Good evening, Commissioners and welcome staff and citizens. I am Dawn Wood, Budget Officer for Calver County Government. This evening, staff will be presenting the Fiscal Year 2024, also referred to as the FY24 Staff Recommended Budget, or SRB, which is the first budget in the budget process. After the presentation of the SRB, the Commissioners will provide guidance to staff on changes to be made for incorporation into the Commissioners' budget. The Commissioners' budget is the second book in the production process, and the public hearing for this budget is scheduled for May 16, 2023. Next slide, please. This is the agenda and list of presenters for this evening. Next slide, please. This is a public hearing. This public hearing is required by the Calver County Code of Public Local Laws. This hearing has been duly advertised, and there is a certification of publication in our files that constitute the record of this hearing. The county has adopted guidelines for conducting public hearings as detailed in Resolution 6-89. An overview of the guidelines were provided as a handout. If you are speaking as an individual, there is a two-minute time limit. If you are the designated representative of an organization, you will be allowed five minutes. If you would like to sign up to speak, there is a sign-up sheet outside of each courtroom. Speakers from the main B O C C courtroom will speak first, followed by speakers from the overflow courtroom. If you are watching and listening on the county website and wish to comment via telephone, there are instructions on the homepage. You will be called on after the in-person comments are finished. Written public comment will be accepted through close of business Tuesday, April 4, 2023. Next slide, please. First item on tonight's agenda is County Administrator Mark Willis.
Good evening, Commissioners and for the public. My name is Mark Willis. I'm the County Administrator. For those here and listening in, please know that my responsibility this evening is to provide a draft budget that depicts a starting point from which the Board of County Commissioners' future budget will be adopted. For our participating citizens, please know that before the Fiscal Year 24 budget can be adopted, a public hearing process just like this one, tonight, must take place. The Board of County Commissioners, along with staff responsible to provide this budget draft, appreciate your input. After the presentation tonight, my staff will consider those comments provided by our citizens and will begin to craft the final budget documents for Commissioners' review. Staff approaches each budget conservatively based on fiscal data available at the time. The Staff Recommended Budget still needs attention to be considered a balanced budget. I, along with staff, will be working with the Board on prioritizing goals and making adjustments where directed. My guidance to staff for the Fiscal Year 24 budget was that expenditures should remain flat, along with no staffing and no initiatives unless staff could not perform their necessary functions. The Calver County Public School System is requesting $163.7 million. Without additional information, county staff has recommended $141.3 million, which represents a difference of $22.4 million. We continue to focus on maintaining sound financial footing in order to maintain our AAA bond rating. This credit rating helps provide significant savings when borrowing money for capital projects, and, most importantly, it demonstrates the county's fiscal responsibility for managing public funds. On behalf of the Board, I thank Finance and Budget, along with the Department Directors and their staff for their hard work to prepare this budget. I also thank the citizens who will take the time to offer their input tonight during this budget process. The annual budget process should represent a statement of priorities, as well as a reflection on the county's fiscal health. For Fiscal Year 2024, all efforts will be made to address the issues of this community and to ensuring future budgets are built from a position of financial strength. We are pleased to present this 2024 Fiscal Year Budget, which begins July 1, 2023. At this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Sharon Strand, our Director of Finance and Budget.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. Tonight, I'll be presenting the General Fund revenues for Fiscal Year 2024, as well as our revenue projections for '25 through '28. The General Fund is the primary fund and is used to record inflows, which are revenues, and outflows of resources, which are expenditures. In this fund, we collect property taxes and income taxes and account for the money that was collected. This budget presents a flat tax rate. We also use this fund for education, mainly for public schools, but also for the College of Southern Maryland, for public safety, for the Sheriff's Office, the Detention Center, the 911 Center, and Career Year Mess. These are just some of the many parts that help keep Calver County safe. For roads, Public Works maintains about 470 miles of roads. For the community, there are libraries, senior centers, parks, museums, and other services. So this slide depicts our General Fund forecast through 2028. The first column represents our budget that was adopted in Fiscal Year 2023. As shown on the slide, our expenses exceed, for 2024, our revenue by $41.4 million. And this is only used as a placeholder until we further define and see guidance from the Commissioners on areas of where we can cut, where we can improve on. By practice, the county will not adopt a budget with an inflow category of use of prior year fund balance. Use of prior year fund balance is usually limited to one-time purchases and/or emergency situations. Staff will continue to work with the Board on solutions to balance the budget, so the expenditures fall within our current revenue projections. Another item that I'd like to point out is Exelon and Dominion. This slide shows that the Exelon and Dominion, their pilot agreement ends in Fiscal Year 2023, and Dominion will be going to a 42% tax credit, whereas Exelon will be taxed on the full value of their real and personal property. The impact on revenues regarding these changes have not been finalized yet. So when we looked at the General Fund forecast, we saw deficits going out through Fiscal Year 2028. So how do we plan for that future? And what impacts? We can see some of the impacts that are affecting the future on the right-hand side of this picture. First of all, inflation and interest rates. They tend to move in the same direction because interest rates are the primary tools used by the Federal Reserve to manage inflation. How high will inflation get? How high will our interest rates grow? We are uncertain of that. Since March of 2022, the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates eight times for a total of 4.5%. This increase impacts the movement of real estate sales, thus reducing registration tax. On the other side of the increase in interest rates, the county has seen an increase in our interest income. So that's one benefit that we have, and we've also seen an increase in our real estate tax assessments, which will help offset this impact. Also, many businesses and individuals benefited from the federal stimulus, which increased their wages. During the past two years, the county has seen an increase in income tax revenue. In Fiscal Year 2022, the county received $115.3 million in income tax revenue. As shown on the prior slide, the county has been conservative on their forecast for '23 and '24 in anticipation of the decline in the stimulus inflow. These above areas will be reevaluated, and staff will continue to monitor as we move forward with the Commissioners' budget. General Fund revenues. Our General Fund revenues are about $374 million. That includes the prior year fund balance deficit of $41.4 million. As you can see from the chart, about 82% of our revenues for the General Fund come from property tax and income tax, and that's been pretty constant since 2010. That means that 8 out of every $10 of the General Fund dollars I'm speaking about tonight comes from these two sources. This is our current income tax forecast. Due to all the uncertainty, income tax for Fiscal Year 2024 has been budgeted conservatively, but recent meetings with the State Revenue Office, the outlooks for income tax remain solid. We're not anticipating them going back up to the 2022 level, but coming down to where we have projected now, and maybe even flattening out in the future. Remember that the income tax comes from about roughly $41,000 income returns that are filed by our residents and distributed to the state, to the county. Like I pointed out on one of the other slides about Dominion and Exelon, this one's going to focus mostly on Dominion. Again, Dominion is coming off their pilot program, which ends in Fiscal Year 2023, and will go into a tax credit program. They'll receive 40% tax credit, so the county will receive 58% of their valued assets. Again, staff is working with the state and our consultant to fine-tune the estimates in order to provide a realistic but conservative revenue number as we move forward with the Commissioners' budget. The General Fund revenue trend. So we can see in '20, in '21, we've had very large changes, increases in our General Fund revenue. And then in '22, we see it decreasing, and then again in '23 and in '24. You'll see that '21 is the largest increase, and it's directly related to income tax. '23, Fiscal Year '23, shows the $11.5 million decrease over '22, which is a decrease in income tax of $9.3 million. Fiscal Year '24 shows a decrease of $9.4 million over Fiscal Year '23, of which $8.8 million is related to the change in the Dominion pilot. Again, staff will work with state and our consultant on fine-tuning that Dominion number. Next up is Beth, who will be covering our General Fund expenditures.
Thanks, Sharon. Good evening. I am Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budget. Sharon spoke to you about General Fund revenues, and I will speak to you about General Fund expenditures. Here is a visual representation of the General Fund expenditures. For every dollar the county spends out of the General Fund, 39 cents goes to the county schools, 36 cents is spent on operating expenses, 12 cents is for pensions, insurance, and debt service associated with capital improvements. Then the remaining 13 cents covers transfers to other county funds and other agencies, for example, the public libraries, Calver Marine Museum, and the non-debt portion of Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. That's just to name a few. The General Fund expenditures increased $32 million over the adopted budget for last year. I will walk you through the top five major changes with the largest of moving down. First, the Staff Recommended Budget includes an increase of $16.2 million for transfers. The majority of that increase is $12.6 million for CIP. In FY23, there wasn't a General Fund contribution to CIP. If you compare the FY24 recommended funding to the adopted funding for FY22, the increase is $2 million. Next, we have project management with an increase of $3 million. Most of that increase is to restore paving funding to its FY22 adopted amount. The budget for FY23 was supplemented with ARPA funding. Third on the list is health insurance. Initially, we projected a 21% increase due to anticipated increase in premiums. We have just received the actual premium rates from CareFirst, and they were slightly lower than expected. Therefore, we'll be lowering our estimate for the Commissioners' budget. Next on the list is the Sheriff's Office. There is a step in a cost of living adjustment in this budget. The Sheriff's Office has the most employees, so it makes sense they would see a large increase in salary expense over the prior year. In addition, a larger number of vehicles are on the FY24 replacement schedule as compared to FY23. The final item is pension contributions, which includes Social Security and the defined contribution retirement plan. As salaries expenses increase, so will these items. Next up, we have Rachel with the Enterprise Funds.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening. I'm Rachel Griffith, Fiscal Officer, and I'm going to present the budgets for the Water and Sewer and the Solid Waste and Recycling Funds. These two funds are enterprise funds and are run like a business, expected to pay for their own operations. These funds operate on revenues earned by charging fees to their customers. Water and Sewer charges capital connection fees and user fees. Solid Waste and Recycling charges tip fees, excise taxes, and solid waste fees. Water and Sewer serves major town centers in Prince Frederick and Solomons, as well as many smaller communities throughout the county. There are 19 water systems and five wastewater systems. The Water and Sewer Fund summary is shown on the screen. This budget is based on the rates currently in effect. As you can see, the changes are relatively minor. The budget increased by less than 4% over Fiscal Year 2023, or $447,796. For revenue, charges for services increased by 5.57%. This is due to the completion of the Cantoride meter replacement project. We now have better consumption estimates as the basis for our revenue projections. Revenue from capital connections is forecasted to slightly decrease in Fiscal Year 2024. The Solid Waste and Recycling Fund is used to run the county landfill at Appeal and all of the six resident convenience centers or compactor sites. This fund's budget is increasing by just over 1%, or $181,728. The revenue increased slightly due to the CPI increase to the solid waste fee. This fee appears on the county businesses and residents' tax bill. The main increase for expenses is for the capital outlay items. This slide is intended to cover the solid waste and recycling fee structure. With this recommended budget, the only change was to the solid waste fee. This fee is charged to county businesses and residents and supports fund improvements to the recycling program. The plan is to raise this fee by $3 per user from $151 to $154. As staff prepares for the Commissioners' budget and finalizes the figures, there will possibly be an adjustment to the other fees. Next up will be Veronica Atkinson and Dr. Townsall.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Veronica Atkinson, the Capital Projects Analyst. My first slide is an overview of the Staff Recommended Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. This table reflects a breakdown of the six-year expenses by functional department. Each of the departments is listed to the far left of the table, with each year's expenses following towards the right. The total expenses for the six-year CIP is $501,388,038. Even though the CIP covers a period of six years, only the first year is adopted or funded by the Board. In this case, it's FY24, and it's highlighted here in yellow. The remaining five years are for planning purposes only. This table focuses on FY24 CIP. The column to the far left details each functional department, and the column in yellow represents their total requested expenses. To the right of the total expenses is a breakdown of the revenues. This shows how each functional department plans to pay for their projects during FY24. The total for FY24 General Fund, which is the top portion of the table, is $64,547,184. Below the General Fund is Enterprise Funds. Here is their revenue breakdown and the funding source the Enterprise Funds will use to pay for their projects. Their FY24 total request is $18,193,000. The FY24 Staff Recommended CIP total is $82,740,184. As Rachel explained, the Enterprise Funds are self-supporting funds. The revenues are based upon the fees received from the users of the utilities, water, sewer, solid waste. These fees also support the Enterprise Funds' capital projects. This concludes Finance and Budget's presentation. Our next presenter is Dr. Townsall, Superintendent of Calver County Schools.
Good evening. One of the most important responsibilities of the Calver County Board of Education, in collaboration with the superintendent and staff, is to provide prudent fiscal management. It can be very challenging at times. The proposed Fiscal Year 2024 budget includes new cost pressures on multiple fronts. First, there is inflation that is approaching 40-year highs. Inflation is increasing cost pressures across the board, in every school and in every department. Second, student transportation costs are increasing at an unprecedented rate. Third, the blueprint for Maryland Futures require additional salary adjustment for teachers. Teachers are required to receive a 10% salary increase occurring between June 30th, 2019, and July 1, 2024. The proposed budget includes salary increases needed to meet the blueprint mandate. Lastly, the proposed FY24 budget includes funding for comparable wage increases for support staff and other employee groups and teachers not defined in the blueprint. These increases are included in the proposed budget to ensure efficient operations of school system and to provide equitable pay for our employees. The employees of Calver County Public Schools have exemplified dedication and professionalism to ensure that the community has an exceptional school system. Our goal, number one, is to provide a safe environment for students and staff to maximize educational opportunities, and most importantly, to attract and retain high-quality instructional and support staff. If you look at our unrestricted revenue, what we're asking for our County Commissioner is unprecedented. What you'll see in the next slide is that we're asking our County Commissioners for $22.4 million, and what's included in that is salary increases for all employees in Calver County Public Schools, including those not defined in the blueprint. As you can see, looking at our unrestricted revenue on the pie chart, we As you can see, looking at our unrestricted revenue on the pie chart, we receive a large portion, sixty percent of our budget, from county commissioners. Only thirty-nine percent comes from our state. And you can see from our federal, we receive less than a percent. And from our local, we receive less than a percent of revenue as well. Major cost increases for this fiscal year of twenty-four is specifically with the blueprint alone, ten million dollars. We're asking for an additional four point two million dollars, which is all the negotiated and mandated employee benefit. And I want to be clear, within that fourteen point two million dollars, that include educators not defined in the blueprint. Special education costs, transportation costs, I shared previously, it's at an all-time high in the last five years. Transportation costs have increased by forty-five percent. Other contracted services, equipment costs with inflation and our facility costs is the major increase for this upcoming academic year. The big story of this budget is the blueprint. Specifically for the changes in students, we must pay for students' advanced placement assessments. We must pay for all students' dual enrollment. We must pay for all students' career and technical education certifications. Changes for staff, as you know, mandated in the blueprint, a ten percent salary increase by July one, twenty-twenty-four. In addition to asking for comparable wages, increases for all staff in Calvert County Public Schools. Budget challenges, meaning still not knowing how much we're going to completely receive from our state, and our implications mainly, the majority of the sixty-five percent of our budget is specifically for staff salary increases. The current legislation is the blueprint, and it requires that we give our educators ten percent between FY nineteen, FY twenty-four. We're preparing to split that up into installments of two point seventy-five before June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. We must have an implementation of the career ladder put in place by fiscal year twenty-five. And by fiscal year twenty-six, starting at the top of twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, our base starting teacher salary for all educators in Calvert County Public School must be at sixty thousand dollars. And there are other blueprint requirements.
So this concludes staff presentation of the staff recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. The floor will now be open for a public comment, starting with those attending in person, followed by virtual callers. So first, we're going to start by the public people who would like to speak in this current courtroom. And then after we have, after they have spoken, then we will bring the people who have signed up to speak from the overflow courtroom. So first on the list is Stephen Moran.
Thank you for having me. I'm short, sorry. Thank you for having me. My name is Stephen Moran. I'm the president of the Paternal Order of Police Lodge one oh nine that represents the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. We had an opportunity to review the twenty-twenty-four budget, the staff recommended budget, and we're here to show our support for that budget. In that budget, it shows a, excuse me. As you know, last year, the county made great strides in closing the market, closing the pay gap between Calvert County Sheriff's Office and the Southern Maryland region. As of April first of this year, the sheriff's office will be an average of seven point five percent behind the southern region market. As of July first of this year, we will be twelve point five percent behind the regional average. The recommended budget has a seven percent COLA in one step, which would put us at five point five percent behind the regional average. Due to financial restrictions and the climate facing the county, we understand there's only so much we can do, and we find that that five point five percent gap is reasonable at this time. But we'd ask for further consideration of a multi-year pay increase on the budgets for future years. Remaining within the five percent range of the Southern Maryland regional average is critical for being able to bring in top recruits and being able to keep the officers and staff we have in place now. We'd like to see the county remain one of the safest counties, if not the safest county in Maryland. We feel that the seven percent in one step is crucial in this. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Next, I would like to call Bob Estes. Next is Jeffrey Lewis.
Commissioners, great to see you tonight. I'm Jeffrey Lewis here. I represent Board of Library Trustees for Calvert County. I am the president. And I just want to note, we appreciate the support that, of the, excuse me. We appreciate the support the staff is recommending on the budget that we've committed, but there are going to be a couple of changes coming in the near future. So thank you for your help.
Next, I would like to call Dr. Yolanda Wilson.
Good evening, commissioners. First and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your continued support of the College of Southern Maryland and your commitment to work together with us to improve and enhance the lives of our citizens through our students. Without your support, we would not be where we are today. And we really look forward to working closely with you for the bright future ahead for our citizens. As I said during the State of the College presentation, we're looking to meet our students where they are and best provide them the opportunity to fulfill their dreams and reach their goals. Our budget involves supporting our employees, working diligently to formulate a solid foundation that will move us in that direction, while managing our resources conservatively. Our fiscal year twenty-four budget has been prepared with two primary goals in mind. Maximizing the use of our resources and minimizing increases as best as possible. So to this end, in a time when we are seeing dramatic increases in the cost of goods and services, and we've had a tremendous enrollment decline over the years with a slight uptick this spring that we're happy to announce, our overall budget is presented with a modest increase of two point three percent. But for the county allocation that we're requesting, we're requesting of each county an overall five point two percent increase allocated based on total square footage of the buildings maintained in each county and student headcount based on each student's county of residence. So for Calvert County, the budget request includes funding for the early college program. It's going to be implemented in the coming fall, twenty-twenty-three. With the total increase, we're requesting of one hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. Thank you.
Next, I would like to call Donna Ostensso.
Good evening. My name is Donna Cox Ostensso. I want to begin by saying, I love this county. It is the only home I have ever known, and I love our public schools. I am a proud educator who has spent the past thirty-four years teaching elementary school students and being the president of Calvert Education Association. As president of CEA, part of my job is to advocate for my profession and the twelve-hundred-plus educators who work for Calvert County. This may mean at times I butt heads with elected officials or don't see eye to eye on a particular issue. But at the end of the day, I would hope that there is a mutual respect for the job that we each have been elected to do. I understand that the process of developing a budget takes months. That is why in December, I challenged Dr. Townsall to build a budget based on the needs of our students and staff, not a dollar amount he thought you, the county commissioners, may or may not approve. One that addresses the shortage of the most valuable resource in education. Teachers, speech and language pathologists, counselors, instructional assistants, to name just a few. Calvert County Public Schools must attract the best and retain the dedicated and hard-working employees of Calvert County. In our region, Calvert County used to have the highest starting salary. But as of July twenty-three, Calvert will have the lowest starting salary of the five surrounding counties. How will we be able to attract the best of the best when we pay the least and have no affordable housing? How will we be able to retain our current workforce when they see a proposed Calvert County Staff Recommended Budget to the county commissioners for FY twenty-four that recommends for Calvert County Public Schools' level funding compared to FY twenty-three? Or in other words, no steps, no COLAs, no additional staff. I get the whole song and dance game that is played during the budget process. But Calvert County staff does know that we will be in the fourth year of our contract with CCPS that provides a step and a one percent COLA. Calvert County staff has been meeting monthly with CCPS and various community stakeholders regarding the implementation of the blueprint for Maryland's future. Staff does know that to meet the requirements outlined in the law, each county must raise their overall teacher salary by ten percent from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-four. Because of this, it resulted in CCPS and CEA signing an MOU in December for an additional two point seven five percent COLA in August and in February. Why would these items not be referenced in the Calvert County Staff Recommended Budget for FY twenty-four when both have fiscal implications on this budget? Why would these salary increases not be included in the FY twenty-four budget for Calvert County Public School employees like they were for county employees? Again, let me say, I do understand the enormous undertaking it is to create a budget. I understand that money matters. But I also understand that the people who are sitting behind me, in the overflow room, and in their homes watching this public hearing, or who submitted public comments, matter too. I want to urge you to keep the needs of our staff and students in mind when funding the Calvert County Public Schools' budget. People move to Calvert County for the schools. According to the National Bureau of Economic Research, there is a strong correlation between school expenditures and home values. A report titled "School Spending Raises Property Values" found that for every dollar spent on public schools in an area, home values increase by twenty dollars. Investing in public education is investing in the future of Calvert County. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Joseph Cormier.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier. I want to talk to you tonight about my experience as a parent volunteer with Calvert County Public Schools. When my youngest started here in first grade, I was a stay-at-home dad. And I was in my son's school five days a week, making copies, picture day, clinics, whatever it was, I was their guy. And there was no twiddling of thumbs, there was nobody sitting in the break room, you know, waiting for something to do. It was all hands on deck. And that was before the pandemic started. We've had a lot of great presentations tonight, and behind all of those supervisors and directors, there's a hundred support staff. The blueprint does nothing for support staff. We've talked about pay parity for sheriff's office. We've talked about pay parity for county staff. The support staff make the day work, from the bus aides to the front office secretaries to the people slinging Taco Tuesday. We need to make room in this budget, not just for what the law requires, but for what our county needs. We need to invest in the jewel of our county, and that's our people. We can save all the trees we want and all the tracts of land, but if there's no one here to enjoy it, what's the point? We need to invest in our children's future, and to say that we don't want to burden our children with the extra fund of hiring more staff, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Our kids deserve an education, and we have to give it to them. I want the CTA to seat four hundred, five hundred kids, but we can't get plumbers to come in and teach them how to do it because we can't pay them. We can't get teachers to come to this county. We need to increase the pipeline of teachers from high school to go to college and come back. We need to grow our own here. So as you build this budget, go from the start line and keep sprinting, because we need to invest in our people. Our people are our needs. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Jenna Lyons.
Testing, one, two, okay. Good evening. My name is Jenna Lyons. Thank you very much for listening to us all this evening. I appreciate your time, and I'm going to try to make this brief. I am an employee that is not included in the Maryland State Blueprint. It's a tough reality to face, really and truly. I enjoy working with the students who bring lots of learning and laughter to my life every day. And I was recently named Support Staff Person of the Year, which is an honor and privilege at my school, Windy Hill Elementary. The reason I'm able to do this job, work with the kids, be there every single day, devoting all my time watching my own children grow up in the school that I volunteered at, served on the PTO at, and now I'm working at, is because my husband is our main breadwinner. Without him, there is no way I could work for this county that I love. I make fifty dollars a day. Okay? I pay babysitters more money when I go out to Washington DC to eat and watch a show. I make seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents an hour. I do get the wonderful insurance benefit, which I think we all appreciate, but the insurance does not pay my bills, and the insurance does not put food on my table. I really feel, and I think you guys do too, that this is not a livable or fair wage. It's just not. The things that we do within the school are so vital and so important. It goes beyond getting the kids off the bus. It, we are their mentors. We are their support. We're their emotional support. We are teaching them. We are making sure that they're meeting all those marks. I really hope that you consider this when you're solidifying your budget. There are people working in Calvert, teaching the youth, and loving what they do, and we can't afford to live in Calvert. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Heather Bronson.
Good evening. My name is Heather Bronson, and I am a pre-K I-8 at Thunderland Elementary. I'd like to start off by saying I have fifteen-plus years of experience in education working at a nationally accredited childcare center within the county, as well as my experience with Calvert County Public Schools. With that being said, I don't even make thirty thousand dollars a year. As a mother of two children, it is absolutely impossible to live and provide for my children on my own with this salary. Thank God for my husband. I do work two jobs myself to provide for my family. I know I'm not the only one working multiple jobs to survive. Many of my colleagues do the same as well. We should be able to live and provide for our families within our county in which we work without having to do additional, having to need additional employment. Other surrounding county school systems, support staff make ten to fifteen thousand more than Calvert County support staff. I think it's absolutely absurd that there is nowhere in the budget to allow for an increase in pay for teachers as well as support staff. But yet, public safety workers, the sheriff's department, and other essential departments of our community, including yourselves, will see an increase this year. What does this mean for our school system? Higher turnover rates, less teachers, that means higher class sizes, less support staff, less support for our students. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next, I'd like to call Chelsea Galloway.
Hi. Good evening. Chelsea Galloway. I graduated from Huntington in two thousand and five. I don't know why this is more nervous.
I was just going to say, I was going to say, please speak into the microphone.
I don't know, I don't know why I feel more nervous than like being in front of eighth graders, but you guys are way less scary. So I currently teach eighth grade at Mill Creek Middle School, but tonight I'm speaking as a citizen. I've read a few things the last couple of days that have concerned me. The first is that the budget isn't final. Of course, it's not final. If it was final, it would be too late. What you see, all these people here, it's advocacy. If we waited until it was final, there wouldn't be anything left. I can't imagine telling a student not to advocate for themselves because their grade isn't final. Another is that we not burden future generations. Cuts, and let's be clear, maintenance of effort with this inflation is a cut to education, burdens future generations. There already aren't enough. There already aren't enough seats at CTA. Teacher shortages are nationwide. Inferring something like raising taxes is a burden to future generations without considering the burden of cutting children's access to services denotes an inability or unwillingness to see the full picture. You can always lower taxes in the future, but children can't get back missed educational opportunities. The third is the staff-proposed budget. The letter from the county administrator claims to prioritize education, but it looks like it actually means we can't legally fund education any less. It even notes new MOE requirements haven't been calculated. It seems short-sighted to not budget at all for what you know is coming, especially as it was proposed by someone who sits on the blueprint committee. The proposed budget is in bad faith. Not only in bad faith to teachers, but to support staff who deserve a living wage and to students who are the ones who this proposed budget would harm the most. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call April Corey.
Hi. My name is April Corey, and I'm the financial secretary at Sunderland Elementary. I'm overworked and underpaid. We're a school of seven hundred thirteen students with roughly one hundred staff members. I handle all financial aspects of my school, and I am also the registrar, adding two hundred thirty-five new students this year alone. I could go on about my endless job expectations and how hard I work, but I'm not here to tell you about what I do every day. I am a twelve-month professional secretary who works year-round, and I am making a salary that is so low that it mirrors what I was making twenty years ago. I bring home twelve hundred dollars every two weeks. I hope this number shocks you because it should. I cannot live on my wage. I cannot afford to take my eight- and nine-year-old son to McDonald's. I cannot afford to help my eighteen-year-old and twenty-two-year-olds with college fees. I know that I'm paying the same gas prices as everyone in this room, and many of us have anxiety just going to the grocery store. I do not know where else I can cut from my family's budget. Many others have received raises in cost of living adjustments, but I feel as though I am forgotten and expected to forge on with a wage that nowhere near reflects being able to reasonably support my family. I do not feel valued. My fear is that if something does not change, I will have no other choice but to seek employment elsewhere simply to meet basic needs of my family. I'm not alone. Please consider allocating funds to help alleviate this crisis. And yes, this is a crisis, this inflation and what we are facing as families and community members. We all work very hard as support staff. We are invested in our livelihoods. You heard many people talk about their heart and soul. I am one of those employees as well. I bring my heart to Sunderland Elementary every single day. We ask that our community invest in us as we invest daily in our school communities. Thank you for your time and allowing me to be here.
The last speaker I have is Anton White.
It's Antoine. I just wanted to sign up so I was like, you know, I'm using on the other side, so I wanted to see what this whole public comment thing was about. So here I am. As you can see, I have on my red to support the teachers, and I also have my blue. I should have on a yellow for bus drivers. I would have to have a lot of shirts to really represent everyone who needs to be represented. But I'm on the Board of Education, vice president, I'm not speaking about that, but I'm also the father of a middle schooler, and I know these folks. When I look out in this crowd, you know these folks and the folks downstairs. You know what they deserve. They need to be respected, they need to be paid, they need to be taken care of. It's not an easy job. I heard you guys say several times how hard it is because you're responsible for everyone's money. It has to be responsibly spent, and we understand that. The presentations and the people that came here, when they came, they didn't just throw numbers together. It's important. They're asking for these funds to make sure, you know, if someone says that they can't take their child to McDonald's or the abuse or whatever, these teachers aren't doing this for the money. They're here. When people put in their time to show up for something, it's because it's important to them. They could be home doing whatever they want to do, but they're here because they want you to see their faces and for you to understand that this is important to them. It's important to me. It's very important to me because they are responsible for our future. So if we're going to spend money on things, why not invest it in our kids? Because they're going to be the ones who are taking care of us. So why not give them what they need now to make sure that they have that? And if we don't have the teachers and the bus drivers and support staff and everyone else, what are we going to do? We can just sit there and we can sit back and act like, okay, I'm going to do whatever I'm going to do anyway. But we have to listen. We have to listen to these people who put you guys in those seats. A lot of them voted for you, supported you. So now it's time for you to step up and show them that you're going to do what they put you there to do. Thank you very much.
Sharon, there are two on virtual. There is one with last four digits of your phone number, one nine three zero. Please press star nine if you wish to speak. And there's one identified as iPhone. If you're using the app, you can use the raise your hand function or press star nine if you're using your telephone function. And neither has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you.
So we do not have any additional speakers signed up. Again, we do not have any additional online. Again, we will hold public comment open until April 4th, close of business. I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and this concludes the meeting. And I'd just like to say thank you and good night.
Thank you.
We need a motion. Yes.
Mr. Commissioner, excuse me. Mr. President, I move that we leave the record open until close of business Tuesday, April 4th, 2023.
A motion to second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, most curious. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.